Right, it's eight o'clock, so I think we will get started. First of all, I want to welcome Kenneth Sternstein, who is making his first appearance. That's a member of the board, so thank you, Ken. It's great to have you with us.
Thanks, Pam.
Of course, as well, you're the chair of the person.
Thank you.
Lady, woman, person, whoever you prefer.
Any of them.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We had a meeting in November. Notes were taken, but they have not been distributed yet. So we're going to have to wait until next month to approve the November minutes. So I think we'll get right to it. So, aqua mar. Excellent. Did you, um, do you have the notice of serving service for the neighbors? So, all the neighbors have to be notified?
We did notify them.
You did?
Yeah.
In fact, I got a notice, so I guess.
Oh, so you can attest to that, but yeah.
If it hasn't been dropped off, I'll make sure.
You could bring it to the village office. That would be terrific. Thank you. Great.
Okay. I'd like to take you through the drawings. We're here to revise the variance. And there, uh, coverage. And it's not because we're, um, we're actually, uh, our, our new coverage is going to be, uh, a little less than the existing by, uh, two square feet. But, uh, we need a variance because we're changing the configuration of the coverage of the building on the lot. And we also have.
You're over coverage.
Yes, we're over coverage.
By, by how much?
Thirty-five, thirty-six is the required, right?
Yes. Proposed coverage is exceeded by ten point five percent.
Okay.
So it's actually three point seven percent less than existing.
Okay, so you're around fourteen-ish over now, and you're going down to about ten and a half.
I think we're going down to thirteen point five. Or two point three. She, she's right. The proposed coverage is exceeded by ten point five.
Oh, I see.
What were the allowable? But it's, it's actually less than existing by like three point.
Okay, squared, right.
Percent. And I'll explain why. And we're also here because of, uh, we have, we're changing the old garage into a family room and porch, and that happens to be in the aqueduct buffer. Okay. Now, this property, uh, has a sloping, uh, front and side yard. It's about fourteen percent. And the only, like, odd, very flat area is in the back of the house. And the goal is to relocate the driveway and garage to the front of the house, so that this can be now a yard for the family. And it also will have a direct connection to, uh, a kitchen and mudroom and family room. So this is where we feel that the yard will work best. We're also going to be able to take this long driveway out of here, which is very hard to use, and move it over to the side and make this, uh, a green space. When we, uh, put the garage over here, we're also going to bump out the house so that there's a two-story addition. And one of the main reasons for that is on the second floor, you have to actually walk through a bedroom to go to this side of the house. So we're going to be adding a hallway and then creating a, a real bedroom space here. In order to do so, we needed to bump that out. But the additions meet zoning in all other respects. Except that floor ratio.
So how is your coverage going down?
Because, uh, we actually have pictures in color.
Ah, there you go. I like that.
Which will help. This is existing. This is existing house and garage, and the purple is the impervious coverage. It's existing. This is proposed. So we have eliminated all this impervious coverage, these paths, and, uh, and this patio here, which is not used at all and not in a good location. And, um, once you add up, uh, the new, and new, um, and compare it to the old, there's a net difference of, uh, less of minus one fifty-two square feet.
But you're moving things at grade, patios and walkways.
Yes.
Structing, structure.
Yes.
You're adding those structures. So it's not really comparing apples to apples, right?
No, it's all coverage is.
I, I wish I knew what coverage is all about. I've been here for a couple of years, but again, what you're doing is you're just moving, picking up patios and using that to pick up and to create bulk. Although I know it's not an F A R application, I understand that, but you're really creating bulk for the, for the placement of some walkways and patios. So that's what you're doing, correct?
Well, it's, it's an.
You could say that.
Yeah, it's an approximate reduction in walkway and patios of seven to eight hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Right, and then.
We broke it down.
The garage is, what, six hundred plus? About six hundred, right?
Five hundred.
Five hundred, yes, six hundred, okay. Remember.
Oh, wait, yeah. Now, so the pink areas are the additions, and the yellow is existing. This old garage will be converted into a family room and porch, and this is the proposed patio. I'm going to show you what we submitted to you, and then I have another scheme that I brought tonight. Our client wanted to see if we might, we, kind of, the patio is so small, it's nine, five inches deep. But I will discuss that after I go through the drawings with you. We want to see, uh, we will want to see and discuss the option or possibility of just making a slight encroachment into the aqueduct buffer. We've had two.
Can I ask you a question on, on the setback, the required setback that's just below the,
Yes.
You're, you're adding a patio where there was no patio before.
Here?
Below.
Yes.
So that's intruding, that's going beyond the setback, correct? You need a variance, you need a variance for that, if you're, if you're reducing the setback?
The side yard setback?
Yeah. Is that an additional?
Well, it's actually, they're trying to make it into the backyard, really, is what they're trying to do.
Whatever it is, the required setback, there's a line, right? There's a line that shows the required setback, and, and right at the, right? And that's now intruding into the what's required setback. So apart from the buffer, that's a separate issue, right? The, the aqueduct buffer, you're also, also mistaken. I think that if you're doing the patio, anything else inside the setback, I think you need a variance for that also. I might be mistaken.
I don't think so, actually. Sorry. But years ago, this was added, and this is in the setback. And also, you know, the husband, Han Engineering, did that whole review of all the variances that we needed. I don't think the patio needs to be in the setback.
So you think that you can create a patio right up to the property line? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, the property line's.
No, I understand that. My point is that if it's not the setback within the setback, are you suggesting that the patio doesn't have to comply with the setback requirements?
I don't, I don't know if there is, uh, I think there is a required distance from the property line, but I know that we went through this, we transcribed all the zoning requirements, just with Han Engineering and.
You have variance, of course, that would look.
Yeah. And I, I think with all the time we've been working on it, I.
Somebody would have said something, for sure.
And I have looked at the code in the past, but I can't recall, uh, what the requirements that you're asking. I think there is a distance from the property line, that's my part. And I'm going to take you through, uh, these drawings to show you the reason why, uh, we would like to, um, seek this variance. This is just a blow up of our calculations, uh, to show the difference in coverage. This house.
Do you want the demo plans? You don't want the demo?
Yeah, well, we showed demos so that you can see what exists. Uh, this is the existing garage. So, the, you know, the, the only place where you can have a yard for children, which is the owner's goal, is to have it here, because this is all sloping, and this is filled with a driveway and a path. And so, uh, we would like to move the garage here, have the doors, this is the house. And on the second floor, right now, the house ends here very near our house, and you actually have to walk through this bedroom to get to the other side. So we want to bump this out just minimally, about four feet.
Sure, is that, I'm sorry? I can't see.
These are second.
That's deep, too, right? Deep, too.
Yes. I'm showing you existing, just so you understand why we are asking, well, this doesn't need a variance, or is it, uh, just, uh, just him up to the setback in order to solve a problem with creating a hallway for these people? And these are just our floor plans showing a proposed patio of this area. This is our kitchen, which is now the family room, which we can hear. So now we have all this, and things have got to link together. The old patio, it's here, it's not used because it feels, doesn't feel private, it's on the side of the house. But there's also, um, to be clear, there was also a patio here that's been taken away as well. Exactly. Good point. Just up is the project designer sheet, um, just pointing out that this is an existing patio that we're taking over with the new garage. Just a clean second floor to show the proposed bedroom and hallway, and then we're doing some renovation work. So elevation, this is just showing the existing front facade. Uh, this is our proposed garage with a bedroom tucked in roofline. Um, we are planning to put a, uh, fence around the new, we hope, the new yard for the house, but it'll be a solid fence, but at the aqueduct, uh, buffer, it will change to a deer fence that's concealed by shrubbery. And I'll show you that, please, down in the.
I ask a question. What's the distance between the property line and that solid? And it's a white fence, right? That's, is that the?
Yes.
What's the distance between, how far back is that white fence from the property line?
I'm doing a jump to the landscape drawings, which, uh, show that distance. It's right here. I believe, uh, Susan told me it was four feet, but what, I think.
Four feet.
It was four feet, and that's what it is.
What, what code is four foot?
Oh, there is a.
Well, the, the code is anything in thirty feet in the aqueduct buffer is not allowed, you know, like, you need a plan grass there, you need a.
Right. And that's why at the upper, it's just a see-through mesh. We're going to show that to you, that was really.
The white, the white fence is see-through?
No, the white fence stops at the aqueduct buffer.
Oh, it's, okay. It's on the, that's, I see where it is.
Yeah, yeah.
I see. It's on, it's on the north side.
Exactly, yeah.
The north side, okay.
We're going to show you the.
I see.
We have a three D view to show you what this will look like. Something that was done because, uh, it was something that was given a lot of attention to when we were at the planning board. How are we handling this, and what is, what does it look like from the aqueduct? The idea is to put a delicate, uh, deer fence that's actually hidden in between shrubbery.
I see.
And wrapping around to where the aqueduct buffer ends, and it becomes a solid wood fence.
Okay. I see that now.
I just want to continue our elevations, just to show, this is the side of the house that has the, uh, two-story addition.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
Even though we're converting the garage to a family room and porch, we're going to make this side of the porch solid for privacy. And this is the side facing south that shows the new garage doors, um, on the new garage addition. This is existing, existing house, so this is the old garage, comes with a ramp. Our sections are simply showing, uh, that the garage has a bedroom above with dormers. It's going to be lower than the main house and tie in with the old house as much as possible. And then the other section is cutting through this, uh, four-foot-deep addition that allows us to create this hallway between the two bedrooms upstairs. These are the photographs of the site. Let's see, on the computer, we had lunged this up for you. So it's easy to see, but hopefully we can make do. Uh, this is the view from the aqueduct right now, and you can see right into this property. You can see the driveway. There's a car here. Uh, this is the house. They have a really, a big problem with privacy. Uh, people actually can walk right off the aqueduct. Sometimes dogs come into the yard. So we really are trying to solve a problem that hopefully is not as good for our client, but also, uh, a good improvement to the view and experience from the, um, pedestrians on the aqueduct. Uh, so these are just different views. You can see right into that driveway. Uh, this is the exist, there's an existing deer fence that wraps around and ends at, um, at the side of the garage. And what we'd like to do is have a similar deer fence where you have posts that look like bark, uh, like, uh, the, um, um, sure, they're, they're like, uh, they're round posts with maybe bark on them, and then you've got this very delicate netting, so you can barely see them. But we have a view, and I'll show that to you in a minute, of what we're proposing that that look like, because it'll be buried in shrubbery. This is the house, just showing the, the slope coming up to the house on the, on the front yard, which makes it difficult to use as, uh, a play area for kids. This is, uh, the old patio, which isn't, uh, really used because of the location. And that's just different views. This is the existing garage, right here, that we'd like to turn into a family room. This is a view of the driveway that takes up that flat area of the property. And this is just a point of view. This is a study that we did, that's required, that we show, uh, neighboring properties, and we compare this house in terms of floor area, or, I'm sorry, uh, square, uh, this is, uh, the building footprint, I believe, to neighboring properties. This has the smallest amongst the houses that we have surrounding the property. And these are just neighboring properties, just to show, a lot of the driveways do come up from, um, Hancock, uh, and I think what we've been consistent with that. We have a very detailed landscape plan, this review by Susan Nolan, and there's been a lot of conversation about this. We had originally started out with a fence on the property line, and we changed landscaping. We created a park-like setting so that this would feel like a really, uh, nice transition between the aqueduct and the open lawn area that we're trying to create, and, uh, look very natural. There's lots of native plants and, uh, thought went into that. And these are the two fences we're proposing. This is the existing deer fence, and this is the, um, proposed, which will tie in with that same materials and just continue, which is about four feet from the property line. And this is a, uh, white painted wood fence that we feel works out with the design of the house. And we have some three D images to show you. This is the view from the aqueduct trail, um, that exists. As you can see, you can look through partially, uh, through some of these bushes and trees. And this is what we're proposing, that you will, this will be, uh, uh, lots of, um, a variety of evergreen, um, trees, some not evergreen, mostly evergreen. And you could just barely see the fence that is going to be running between shrubbery. Uh, because the, uh, this is another view showing the corner. Uh, this is the corner of the, of the property, showing the existing driveway, the existing house. And then this is our proposed image showing the new landscaping with a deer fence between the shrubbery. And at the end, at the end of the aqueduct buffer, we transition to a wood fence.
Yeah, I see that.
And at the request of our clients, we have a, I have, I wanted to ask the board if you would entertain the idea of, that the patio is actually only nine and a half feet deep. And we have this, uh, drawing on our computer, but not on, on this scale. And I don't know, you know, I know this is not what we submitted, but we wanted to know that we could, uh, if this board would ever consider that the patio goes another two and a half feet into the, uh, aqueduct buffer. We, we know how important the aqueduct buffer is to the village of Irvington. But, uh, if we, if we brought this patio two and a half feet into the aqueduct buffer, it would now, it would end up being twelve feet deep, and we could put a, a table and chairs on it. And, uh, I think we ended up with this scheme because we were, uh, had the impression from the planning board that maybe there would be no, uh, uh, that that was something that was considered, you know, very, really sacred, intrude. So I, I just want to ask the zoning board if, if that is a possibility. We had one member of the planning board said, maybe you should see if you could fight for that extra depth.
Well, the problem with that is none of the neighbors are on notice that that's what you want to do. I mean, we've, we've part of the whole, you know, part of our process is that the neighbors need to be able to know whether or not they want to object to that. And I don't know that we even have the power to act on papers that haven't been submitted, do we? I, I don't believe we do. But I certainly don't think we could give approval with that unless it had been given notice to the neighbors. I mean, that, I think, materially. Yeah.
I just have another for me.
Yes.
And you said a couple of things, the buffer is, the deck like is sacred, certainly is sacred. And the board's walking down, it has to have this buffer on either side, so you don't get the impact of, of homes, and things are there, are there. So clearly, the garage has been there, it's been grandpounded in it. And it's a garage, it has a dormant use in life, right? You pull in, you pull out. It's not a family room, which like will have windows, has a porch, people spilling out, in a good way, from the new family room onto the front porch into the buffer, and you can use the buffer. But I have a fundamental problem with converting your garage to a living space, to a family room, as it's within the buffer. You have the garage there now. Is there any reason why you couldn't put a family room where the garage is up front? I mean, why do you have to have that intrusion and the use of that space more intrusive than it is now?
Well, the, um, this is the, this is the patio for the house is actually right here, taken that way. And, um, this is the family room. There's a very skinny, small kitchen in the house. And we have now moved the kitchen into this space and made that family room, because the house has a, a living room, the library, all formal spaces, and doesn't have a lot of, of family-friendly spaces. And by, by making this kitchen family room and connect it to the yard, it makes it a more family-friendly property, and it was, um.
And that's garage, that, that's rather, that's garage, correct?
Yeah.
So is there any reason why that can't be made into a family room?
Well, in this garage here?
No, where, where the garage is presently, right? That's, that's garage where her finger is now, correct? The driveway goes into the garage. Right, it's a garage, sir? Right, it's existing, correct? It's not existing.
This is the proposed garage.
Oh, okay.
We are moving the garage from the back to the front.
Okay, yeah.
And that's because this is.
So same thing then. So why can't you make that proposed garage a, a family room, living space, and leave the garage in the back where it is? Other than aesthetics?
Because the space here is much more usable, user-friendly, it's quite a steep slope, so there's not a sense. What we really felt we needed to do for this family was to get rid of this driveway. And for the, I feel the aesthetics of the aqueduct as well, what they see now is cars parked in the lot, right next to the, in, in the buffer. And we felt like it was more.
To allow structure in the buffer with living space, how do we turn down other people with similar issues? It's a problem. I mean, again, it's very, you use the word sacred, I agree with that word. It's a very sacred space. It defines Irvington. And to just allow people to convert what I would call a dormant space, this is pre-existing, it's a garage, it's not conforming pre-existing, and we understand that, but now you're going to convert its use into something that's going to have the, the impact on the buffer and the, I have a fundamental problem.
In the family room, um, you know, the distance from the aqueduct, where will the TV be? What type of sound system is going to be put into the family room? Will there be, uh, you know, if you're walking on the aqueduct, um, and, you know, you know, someone's got a seven point two sound system in the family room, and they're watching a movie, will you be able to hear the movie and, and that sound on the aqueduct? You know, from the, from the noise from, uh, the family room TV, the sound system that's in there?
There's so much noise from the house on the other side of the aqueduct from your house, is any noise you make, well, it would be heard.
Well, we know, we are planning to make this solid here, this solid wall, and, you know, uh, this is.
I thought, I thought I'd enjoy.
Well, the benefits of moving this garage is taking the driveway out of that part of the property, and it's a very long driveway. It eats up that whole narrow piece of property that can't be used for any outdoor use. And I actually worked with the previous owner, had the same problem, that the children have no place to play because it's too steep to use the buffer. And that's the big benefit, moving that gives you a green space, and I think it benefits the aqueduct as well, because instead of looking at cars, they're lining up, and you can see those cars. You'll have now a nice green space.
I, I, you know, I mean, there's a driveway there now, so you're removing, you know, it, uh, a, a surface and replacing grass, so that's, that's nice, all right? But, you know, the, the, the family room is now living, there's people there. And I understand, um, you know, it, you know, it's nice to have a, a backyard, a flat area, I, trust me, I understand it, um, with kids. But, you know, in that, in that living, I mean, I'm just, you know, you got a, you got, you know, a living area now, you know, very close to the aqueduct. I mean, is there soundproofing in that, in that wall? What kind of structure?
We can put soundproofing. You know, this is a heavily used garage, too. The family comes in here and then comes through a mudroom into the house. So how do you compare a family room to activity? Kids coming out, cars coming through the house? I mean, there's still activity and noise around here. This is not just, uh, I don't think.
But there's, there's not a T, there's not a TV with a sound system in it right now.
Cars with sound system. But no, I definitely could do, I just don't know what, you know, the space is there, is available. You know, the space is there, once we move the garage over. And it's really, uh, it looks like a, it's a long, skinny house, and it's really not that, it's not, there's hardly any informal space. It's a very tiny kitchen here and family room. So we wanted to give a real, um, a, a comfortable kitchen and move it.
It would be great if it wasn't in the aqueduct, in my opinion. It would be great. It's a great design, I'm not saying it's not. It's just that it's in the aqueduct. That's a problem for me.
So what about, um, sound insulation? Is that something?
That's not gonna, that's, that's not the test. For me, it's not the test. But it's also the front, even the porch there is going to be an open porch, right? People on the porch, you know, we're not going to ban people from sitting on the porch with their rocking chairs, because that's what I would do if I was living there, but it, it really should not be living space in the buffer.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
That's just me.
I don't think coverage is an issue. I understand what Arnie was saying, that you're, you're taking out paths and you're putting in structures, but you don't have an F A R issue, and you're reducing the coverage. So the coverage doesn't bother me personally at all. I do think the biggest issue is what are we putting in the buffer? So I just want to go through this, if you don't mind, one more time. So the deer fence, right? And then you're converting the garage, but you're not adding anything to the garage. And then alteration of the porch, but is that in the buffer? That is in the buffer.
But it's inside the garage, inside the original.
Okay, so it's all within the footprint of what is already there? I mean, you know, I'll, I'll give you my opinion, and everybody else, obviously, then will, and I don't know, is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on this? Or, no, okay. I didn't know if there were any neighbors or anything. I actually think getting rid of a driveway and the cars is actually a better benefit, um, to people on the aqueduct than living space. I mean, obviously, you can't control what everybody's going to do in their living space from here on in, but in reality, removing cars and adding green space, to me, seems like more of a win for people on the aqueduct than whatever noise you may have, especially at night, you know, when most people aren't using the aqueduct, or during hours when people are mostly in their living room is going to be, and their family room is going to be later, especially when that would have an impact on the aqueduct. So I don't have as big a problem with Arnie. I absolutely respect what Arnie says, which is we have been very careful of the aqueduct, um, and very protective of it. So I understand. So I understand his general disposition. I just happen to think this might actually be a win for the aqueduct if you're getting rid of cars and a very long driveway. So that's my opinion. Does anybody else on the board want to be heard on this?
I do have a question. You said that the, the porch off of the, the existing garage, new, new family room.
Right.
You said, so that's within the footprint, within the existing footprint, what will the porch look like? I mean, it's, it's...
We have a question about...
No, it, well, that, no, that is, isn't that it on the, no?
Oh, it's, it's right here. Yeah, the fence in front.
Fence is in front of it, but it's, this, these would be the doors out from the family room and then...
But this is out, this is...
That's facing, right, that's facing out towards, towards Lee Avenue.
But what, do you have a view that shows what it looks like from the aqueduct?
Yes.
I mean, I understand the fences and stuff. Okay, so, so you said that, so the side is solid, that part, yes, that part...
Well, there's solid windows, but we can remove...
Right, no, no, well, I mean, just, but so, but in terms of the porch, so the porch is solid facing the aqueduct and then open facing, I guess that's Ardsley Avenue, is that right?
Yeah.
Wouldn't look much different than what it looks like now, except there wouldn't be a car in front of it.
Right.
Anybody else want to be heard on this? Ken, Judd?
No, I mean, I, I, I like the idea of the deer fence, I like the idea of, you know, putting in shrubs, removing the driveway, all of that, creating a backyard that's usable where there's a driveway right now. I just don't, I mean, I, I just don't know if, if, you know, to have living space within the, within the 30 feet of the buffer. You know, that's...
Has the planning board approved the fence? They've approved the fence location? Planning board, have they voted on that?
I believe, I believe they have, right?
They put all that stuff, right?
It's not, but the, the chairman of the planning board emailed me and I believe he said everything...
Yeah, they passed it.
As it is, that the land's...
So under the ARB, I think, is that the next step, is the ARB on the fence also?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the next thing you have to do also.
Yeah, yeah.
I put up deer fence, I mean, just one, planning committee.
But because they're putting up a solid fence.
Oh, solid, I thought you put the deer fence.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They'll still have to go before the ARB.
Yeah, the deer fence, probably not, I don't think.
Probably not, no, yeah.
I guess I just wanted you to see what it looks like now. This is the main kind of entry into the house from the driveway.
So that's looking north?
The family doesn't...
Looking south.
Oh, oh, I see, I see, I see.
This is the old garage that we want to convert into a portion of the family room, but right now, the, everyone enters this way. It is so steep in the front that they don't really use the front entry. And that, and our new garage is going to have an internal entrance.
And you're not adding height to that garage?
No, not at all.
All right.
I mean, I, I'm, I understand Arnie's concerns as well. I think I agree with Sarah that I, when I was looking at the plans myself, I was pleased to see that that long driveway was being removed and that a lot of shrubs were being planted. I mean, I can remember when I'd use the aqueduct, seeing this property and it looks like it would be a big improvement in terms of the shrubs. I don't know that I'm opposed to that, and I'm pleased also that that, the side of the new family room, just the small windows on top, it's not, you want to see a whole lot inside. But if there were, if it was within our jurisdiction to, to make sure there was some noise protection or something like that, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Well, we could always grant a conditional variance, variance that asks you to include soundproofing.
Our firm has experience doing music studios.
Okay.
The whole band will be playing and you'll be on the other side and you can't hear anything. And we'd be happy to do something that, to that degree and even, I don't even know if we need windows on that wall, but we definitely can do some soundproofing on that wall if you feel that would keep the peace and quiet of the aqueduct, because we know that that can be successful.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to, to say on...
I'm recusing myself.
So, yeah, John's refused because he was, lives in the neighborhood.
Well, I can speak as a neighbor, I choose to make no more remarks than the one that I did, which has nothing to do with these people.
Right. All right, I'm going to make a motion. I am going to make a motion to approve the variances with the condition that there is soundproofing put on the aqueduct side of the existing garage, the proposed family room. Do I have a second? Okay, so let's vote from right to left, I think we know how Arnie's going to vote, but go ahead.
I surprise you, I won't, it's, no.
Yes.
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 Okay. You've got your variances and I'll send you a letter that has the conditions and then you'll go watch your next step.
Thank you.
Okay, McLawhorn. Is anybody here on the, oh, you, come on back up. You're in the neighborhood anyway, right?
We're planning to renovate the house and we're making improvements to the house so that we can add a small extension to the front of the house, this little entry here in the front, adding a mudroom entry.
Oh, I'm sorry, did, did you also do mailings for this?
Yes.
You did? Okay. And did you bring to proof the mailings?
I don't have them, the clients did the mailings.
We'll make sure, I'll make sure that they both get to you.
Okay, okay.
Those are the mailings.
Yeah, great.
So, site plan, and I was saying that we're planning to add some very, very small extensions to the house. We build the patio and, and then finish the sun, the porch that's there as a playroom. And we're here because the existing house is non-conforming in many ways. The entire house is in the front yard, sit back to see the entire house. It has, it's a very, the lot is only 17,382 square feet, required, it's 40,000, undersized lot. And the coverage that exists is higher than a chicken. This is the, acquired is 2,085, but the existing is, well, if you add up the, the house and all the impervious surfacing is, is 3,929. We are proposing these small additions, but we're also going to decrease some of the impervious surfacing so that when we're finished, we will have a total lot coverage, a reduction of 120 square feet. We are going to add to the building 78 square feet, but we're reducing impervious surfaces by 198. We have a net difference of 120 square feet. Now, I want to show you the existing plan of the house to show you the problems that we're tackling to make these improvements. There are no closets on the first floor when you enter the house. It's a beautiful house, through the inside, a grand, you know, nice central foyer, especially seen from the back. But the front entry, there's no coat closet here, there's no coat closet nearby, so we want to add a small bump out so we can add that closet and also a roof covering to that, to the front entry. This is existing, I just wanted to explain what exists so you can see why we're adding these additions. Right now, there's also no closet here off the driveway, there's an entrance into the kitchen, and there's no mudroom, this is really a pantry, there's no decent closet space, so we're adding a small bump out to create a mudroom. And then a very small addition to the kitchen just so that it's a, a more usable space, it's a very small space right now. And we're making some trade-offs with impervious cover, impervious surfaces such as the patio, we've reduced it in size, really because we want to create a symmetry with the existing house and we've taken away some of the past, unnecessary, which are, and so I can... I also want to explain that we're making some improvements to the second floor, we're getting rid of a very, a stair that has very kind of dangerous winders, it's very old, and where, I'm showing you also the third floor. And the reason for showing you that is because the house actually meets the floor area ratio if we don't include the third floor, but if we do, we're way older. And this is the existing old third floor. And these are finished rooms with old plaster and trim work. I want to make the comment, on your agenda, it doesn't fall for the number one, that we, we were asking for as well.
Ah, okay.
We want to make these legal spaces, even though they look original, we can show you photographs, it's what throws that floor area way off.
Okay.
Now, this is our floor plan, this heavy line here shows set box, to show that the whole house is in the front door. And we're adding this entry so we can add the closet in front of the house and a small little, this covering over that front door. This entry also will have a big improvement to the front facade, which we'll show you in a minute. Like, it feels like it doesn't fit the house in some kind of a nondescript. We're taking the old staircase and replacing it with powder room. Right now, that powder room's underneath the staircase, it's very awkward, low ceiling carpet. And we're also adding a chandelier, which gives us a mudroom closet here. This small bump out is just here to increase the space around the kitchen, to make that more... We're also rebuilding this porch and we're going to make it symmetrical to fit the house, the look of the rear facade, which is this really beautiful symmetry. And we're going to finish this sunroom now and make it into a clear room. Just to, just for your information, we're also doing some work upstairs with the bathrooms. And again, just wanted to make sure you're aware of, we're calling these storage areas, I think, because we're not sure if they're legitimate bedrooms, but we want to legalize. So this is the front facade of the house and I might want to jump right to photographs. This is the front entry we want to put on the house. Also relocating windows to create a better composition of windows. And we're giving the whole front of the house a...
So what does that do, front porch, do with the dimensions? How much does it come out more beyond the building?
I just want to check it so make sure I don't give you the wrong number. It's only a two feet, I believe it's... The third floor is going to be that much.
No, how much will it come out from the existing?
If the front yard setback says existing is 24.9...
It's coming out three feet, one inch. It's just minimal.
Okay.
And then two feet six. We, we know, we're in the front yard, we really tried to keep it minimal just so that it would work, give us the coat closet that's needed for the house.
I'm, I'm sorry, question, the, the data hearsay, existing front yard setbacks, 24.9, proposes 19.3 to the porch. That's, that's more than three feet.
Yep. The porch, if we add the porch, it's two feet six, 30 inches, just a big wide step to...
I'm just quoting the numbers that you have here.
Yeah, so the overall bump out is five foot seven.
Oh, okay, yeah, more than three feet, that's my point.
Right. To the porch, it's more than three feet, yes. I just want to continue describing the additions. I think this one is, let's see. The entry addition is 34 square feet and that's the, this is the look that we want. This is the mudroom addition, only like 27 square feet. And then we have a small bump out on, off the kitchen, which is with Melissa. These are photographs of the house, which shows the existing plan. And you see, it's very understated and we're, we're replacing that with, we're bumping this out three feet and adding the porch in front of it with a railing on top, which we feel is really aesthetically good for the house. This is the side of the house, it has an existing porch, so we're moving that and putting our new mudroom entries there. And this is the back of the house, you can see from these images, but our plan is to replace the porch that's there, it's not, it's not, it's deteriorating, sort of replacing, I mean, the patio, and we're going to build it to, to replace the skinny, you know, cement and... These are just, these are some of the green parts, actually not far from the wooden cup. And this is the stuff that we have up in the property, for area ratio. We have seven properties here and this, this is one of the smallest lots in the area and the floor area ratio is, existing area is actually similar to some of the houses, but less than, from 4, 4,700 to 8,000 square feet. So the house is similar to just pretty few that are in the same range of 4,500 to 4,700.
Right. But it's on a much smaller piece of property.
But it's on a very small piece of property.
Well, can I ask everyone else a question, way in, my, my first thought is that these coverage numbers are not pretty. I mean, this is, I understand you're taking away some coverage and coming out lower, but it is, to sort of go back to Arnie's point, from before, it's adding bulk on a very small piece of property, that's harder when, you know, the, the coverage numbers from the last matter that we just saw were in a very reasonable range and these are not. So that's, I think, my first concern. Does anybody else have any thoughts on...
I, I sure, I sure like to, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, we're a zoning board, so we have to think this way. What you're doing makes all sorts of sense, but, but to Sarah's point, we've got a responsibility here, and I share that concern.
I'd just like to say, it's only 78 square feet. The additional bulk is 78 square feet, it's a tiny amount. And we did, we did explore a lot of ideas and how we can accommodate closets and the most challenging was relocating that stair. We had images of these, just to start to show you, but it's very steep, they have small children, it's very dangerous, and there was just nowhere in the house to fit that stair. So to sort of accommodate closets and relocating the stair and the very awkward powder room, this is the best design that we were going to come up with, and we really tried to keep our capacity, and we tried to, we tried to, we just keep it very minimal because we... Because we understand that the coverage is important.
Right, yeah, no, it is. When you're talking about that stair, now where does that come into?
Just in terms of?
Right of the house?
It's in the front of the house. And it goes all the way upstairs to the second floor. And it's almost like these were service quarters, the way this part of the house is just completely different than the rest of the home. So these stairs are winding, they go all the way down to the basement. So we do need access to the basement. And they go from the basement to the first floor, up to the second floor. They don't use them now, they're very unsafe now. And just accommodating that length of stair, which we, we don't want a second stair. We just want stairs to the basement. That's all we needed. And to be able to fit that, we're proposing to put it under the existing stair and relocating this very awkward bathroom. You actually come down a step here, it's like five foot ceiling height. And you sort of come out to the toilet room, and it's this tall ceiling. So we just wanted to fix some of the very awkward spaces in the house. And then, of course, just add these closets that don't exist in the house. I think what Melissa just said is that we cannot find enough place for a closet. With all the, we've studied this for a long time to figure out how it can solve all these problems. Take the powder room from under the stair, put a new stair in, get a closet. And we felt there's only way to do this, is add a small bump out.
Just a question. Where, where, obviously, the house sits very far forward on the lot. Was any consideration given to adding closets that would be in the rear of the house? I understand the stair issue, but?
There's a wall of glass here, there's a back door, another wall of glass here, and glass here. There really was no place to put, actually, the rear elevation is the most beautiful elevation in the entire house. So we didn't want to block it in any way. It sounds like, this looks like it should have been the front of the house, but it has a beautiful entry, actually, it's covered by the trellis. But this entry has a bracketed, small gable. And then we have these beautiful full-length doors. And there, there's, you see, there's no space for a closet without breaking that symmetry. On the inside of the house, you know, is, is, there's no space here on each side of that door without upsetting the symmetry of that beautiful space. All these rooms, the hallway, the iron livery have been ceilings too. And there's, this has such beautiful, has strong character that you couldn't just put a closet in the corner of those spaces. So we have looked all around the house to figure out how we can get this to work. And, you know, the mudroom addition is actually taking the place of an old porch. This is the depth, is that correct? Yes, we didn't, we didn't go beyond this. It's actually very similar to this. Actually, we have not gone beyond this edge here. So when you say we're adding bulk, we're just really moving this and closing it in. There is already a porch there, I mean, it's an open porch, not a story projection. But it's not like there, there's anything there. And that, the other one, comes out about, I think, three feet as well. We're matching the depth of the old, of the old porch. I'm sorry, we were planning to show you all this on our computer room. See if we can get that, find the first floor. This comes out two feet eight. And we have, you know, part of that bumping into the kitchen. They're really trying to minimize the extra room. The existing door is four, it's a three foot six door. So even this distance was sort of determined by the door that we are going to keep and reinstall. So we made it as small as we could to accommodate the door opening in the space here. We reduced the size of these steps here, they were much wider, much bigger. We tried to do as many trade-offs as we could to take away from that. Also, there is a door into that stairwell, where they're eliminating that well and that wall. So we're eliminating the impervious surfaces there.
Okay, what about, talk to us a little bit about the FAR variance.
FAR, I'm a little lost, I can read it better. So the existing basement is unfinished, doesn't apply. We are asking for an increase of 253 square feet. If the existing total, not including the existing attic, is 3,650, and the required is in fact 2,954, so we're under. What puts us over is legalizing the finished attic. And in the proposed same thing, it's actually 3,903 with the additions. But once you include the finished attic, it puts us over to 4,765. It's an existing attic, we're not doing any work to the attic. We had the computer to show you pictures of the existing specs, so you can see that it's just, it's again, sort of made quarters, it was, it's.
It's part of the original house.
Yeah.
Although, down the road, what would that mean if? I mean, I guess I'm not quite sure what is meant by legalizing the space.
We didn't request to legalize it. It was actually Ed Marin who said that as we were doing the zoning data, we should include the attic as part of it. So we did.
So that means it's not a lawful living space?
Right.
Right, you can rip out, redecorate it, you can make it modern, you can do anything you want to it.
Right.
As opposed to if it was not granted, it would just have to remain as it is? And if you're using it as living space, it would be a violation?
Right. There are a family of four, and they have four bedrooms upstairs. It's, the house is plenty big, and they don't use that now.
I'm just wondering why, if it's original, why would it not have been included?
Not bother it.
Yeah. I don't understand that.
Is that also like a three-story structure? Is that another issue, is it going to three?
Right, I was just going to ask that. Does that make it a three-story structure?
I don't think so. All the ceilings are sculpt ceilings. There's very few areas that actually have flat ceiling on them.
Doesn't this go back to a case about, about how much, how much space is there above a certain six feet?
Exactly.
What's this, what's the first?
Obviously, seven and a half.
But it is, actually, the code states that if the space is finished, the entire attic is considered as part of the floor area, if it's finished, despite the. The state code, which says that finished space, but sometimes the local codes.
Right.
Half-story if it's empty. So I would have to find out what, or how urban to see it. But just so you know, there are windows, there's three rooms up there. And these are the three windows on that side. But in front of the house, there are no windows. There's, it's nothing on the front of the house.
Okay.
And this is unfinished attic space. There's just one access door to that, just exclusive. This is the front, there are no windows, so, yeah.
And you get to the attic with a set of steps, a regular set of steps to the attic?
Yes.
Any questions from anybody on the board? Yeah, I'm a little stuck on this one, because I, I understand what you're saying. It's only 78 feet that you're asking to build in terms of structure. But not only, it's two things, way over, way over coverage. And also, you know, we really are required to give variances that are as small as possible to achieve the goals. And sticking out another five feet in the front, which is two different setbacks, one for coverage and one for a front yard encroachment, makes me a little uneasy.
Just, I noticed that above the front door existing is a, is a.
Do you want to be here on?
Yeah, and I'll make a comment when you're, after you make your comment.
So close down, right? For the front door closing, right? How far does that stick out to you personally?
Maybe 14 inches, yeah.
So not that much off. So when you're measuring the setback from the building, not from that, right from the ground, not from up there, okay.
I just want to make sure that you received the letters from myself and my neighbors that were in support of.
We did.
Okay, just want to make sure. So, and I think that in terms of the entrance in particular, besides solving some architectural problems, I think that, you know, even when we were in front of the planning board, one of the members sort of zinged us for saying, oh, wow, the front of the house really is ugly, but the back of the house is so beautiful. And, you know, I think that the entrance is really aimed at enhancing the architectural character of this house as well. Really making a harmony between the front and the back. And I think that, you know, that's, you know, our neighbors have the same opinion. I think anyone that walks around the house would have the same opinion of that. So not only does it solve some sort of functional, practical problems, but also really elevates the character of the home and will increase the character of the neighborhood, I think. I mean, I think that was echoed by our neighbors as well.
Can we get your name when you address the record?
Yes, sorry, yeah, we can.
Oh, okay, right, oh, Alex could call our own, because it's recorded, sure. Forty-seven hours later, West.
And, you know, we, we filled in the recess there, but, you know, this has, gives us only 30 inches of roof covering over your front door, which is something that's highly desirable. It's usually like considered almost inferior when you don't have a roof over your front door.
So you're talking about bumping out the front, the mudroom. And was there another place that you're bumping out? Will the porch just be the side porch?
We're closing, right, so on the, we're closing out this space that we talked about?
On the, on the right, that's right, okay.
All right, so it's an existing structure, just closing it out.
Just closing it out. I have questions about the FAR.
I was just going to say that a second ago.
Like, that whole FAR has got to be like, something there. Because if, if there's, if there's an approval on that, then there's precedent set for homes in the village to utilize attic for living or, because this came up like two months ago.
Yeah, right, right, right.
And it wasn't resolved because it was, we had to, I don't know, I mean, were you even thinking about going to the trustees to sort of?
Well, the concern was we were de facto changing, could be changing the code.
Right, right.
On a defective.
And doesn't this seem like the same problem we've running up against again?
Right, it's in the kind of, it's a large home, but still.
Right, but still, yeah.
Yeah, I, I understand architecturally what you're trying to do, I admire, but we, we're, as I said before, we've got a responsibility here.
Yeah.
So let me suggest this, though. The notice doesn't even talk about the FAR, which was an omission, not by you guys, but somebody left it off. And someone might say, you know, if you didn't do it, maybe it's not legal, might cause a problem for yourself down the road. But consider not addressing the FAR today, right? We vote on the rest of the things, which are important, obviously. And if the, and then we do a little research, you talk to Ed Marin, we'll talk to Ed Marin. If the FAR is a problem, you can come back with a new application just on the FAR. And we can consider that, rather than, let's sort of let you move along.
That sounds great. The FAR, by the way, I really believe that it's such an unusual situation, because it's such an undersized lot for this kind of house. But, you know, it was built that way, so I don't know how.
That's, that's the problem.
What's the age of the house, when was it built?
From my perspective, it was built that way. When did, you, you bought it relatively recently?
So the house was built in 1911, someone was asking that question. We bought the home at the end of 2016. It was, it's sort of bizarre, I think the property card was completely wrong. You know, there were a lot of issues going on with all that. You know, it sold to us as a seven-bedroom home.
Which would include the attic.
Which would have included the attic, although we don't use that floor at all and don't have intention to do that. But, you know, that's the way it was built. But then, they didn't have a certificate of occupancy for the powder room, but got one when they put the home on the market. So there are, all these homes, like old homes, are just kind of bizarre and have all these little nuances to them.
Well, it's pre-existing non-conforming use. And you probably wouldn't even have to get the approval, it is what it is. At least we got space there, I think. So I don't know whether or not I was not considering the FAR tonight, it creates a problem for you tonight. I think you can move forward with the rest of it, and then we could revisit FAR. We could talk to Ed Marin if you need to. It's important you can make another application, and we can consider it that way. But for us to just grant such a huge, not really understanding the impact, I think I'm trying to do that. Again, I'd rather not hold up the rest of your project.
Yeah, generally, I'm just curious, because we spoke about this in the last application in terms of conditions. Is it possible to approve the FAR, like in some way conditioned on not having those turned into bedrooms? I mean, I don't know if that's possible.
Right, yeah, that we're not approving it.
Right, yeah.
Whether we can carve out an exception, say it is a pre-existing, pre-code, not conforming, therefore, it can remain, or something like that. But I think we just need to know a bit more before we do anything on that.
There's no closets in those bedrooms that helps. Oh, you need a closet for it to be a bedroom?
Not in the city, you know.
Not in the city.
I think you're right, I think.
And there's no place for a closet, because all the walls and ceilings come in, so.
But then if it's approved as living space.
You could add that.
You could add that, right, right, right.
Or somebody down the road could, if you have no place to.
And it also sets precedence in the village for, you know, you know, third floor living sp, you know.
Attic conversions.
Attic conversions. And that's just.
Right, that's where.
So let me just shelve that, if you're okay with it, and vote on the other two or three things that you need for this project to go forward. Or we could adjourn it, or?
I don't really want to do that. I, I just don't like getting in business sort of incrementally approving things. But if the rest of people can do that, that's fine. From my perspective, I'd like to see the total package.
I want to, you know. That, that, that's been a problem for us when people do that to us. When they come back, you know, six months later with something new and something different. I think this is us that can make sure to say, we want you to go forward on your project. We respect the fact that there is something out there. I don't, I think it's a legal issue, because it wasn't noticed, quite frankly. And I think people need to have noticed. I think there might be an impediment down the road. And for your own protection, I would suggest that if we do, it be simply noticed. And I can almost take the position that it's not part of this application, because it wasn't noticed.
Right.
Therefore, we can grant your application, because it doesn't include FAR. You move forward on your project, and then you figure out the FAR thing, you can come back, and if you need to, and you're the homeowner, so you can make a decision on what you want to do. But we're going to adjourn the whole thing till next week, next month, I should say.
What's considered the application, what's up on the site or the actual application we submit? Because our actual application has FAR.
I think it's, I think what's out there for public notice is really what is.
Right, because this is the notice of public hearing, right, right, yeah.
So if someone wants to check to the FAR component of this, they wouldn't have to notice of it, right? Or we're going to adjourn it till next month, so whatever you feel comfortable doing. And that's up to the chairperson, obviously.
Right, right, you. Okay, I, I was going to say exactly what John actually said, which is that we, generally speaking, we do not like people to come back to us. And we've, we've definitely frowned upon that, because we'd like to hear, we don't like people six months later to say, now I want to convert my attic to, or something along those lines. But in this case, I agree with Artie, it wasn't properly noticed to the public. It's not, frankly, something you need to go forward with the material parts of your project right now. And if you could talk to Ed Marin again about the FAR, and I could talk to Ed Marin about the FAR and try to get a better handle on that, I think that would be a better way to do it. So really, all we're going to consider tonight is the coverage issue and the encroachment into the front and two side yard setbacks. You know, like I said, this is a tough one for me, because the coverage numbers are so high. And we do have to give you as small a variance as we can. But you have taken away some of the coverage issues. You're coming in with something that's actually a little bit lower on the coverage. And I think you've convinced me, just barely, that this is the least amount of a variance that you need to make the house practical and functional for you. and functional for you. So I will make a motion to approve the variances. Again, these are the ones for coverage and for the intrusion into the front and side yards. Do I have a second?
I'll second that one.
Okay. Let's vote from, Ken, you want to start, start us voting?
Yeah, I, I vote yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I will send you a letter, it's basically telling you that you've done those two things, and then I would, I would check in with, I would check in with Ed on the FAR, and like I said, I'll speak to him about it as well, but if you need to come back to that, we can figure that out later. Thank you. And it doesn't seem like anybody sent anything.
No, that was actually, your hand dropped up.
So we got...